Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. Moving on to the wall call.
I'm ready to sit down.
Okay. I feel lonely over here. I took a shower.
Turn over next to Bonnie.
All right, Ron Knuff will be absent. Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Aman.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ron Glassick.
Here.
Judy Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue, the absent. Judy Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Prestash.
Present.
Mason Small.
Present.
I need approval of the minutes of the public workshop meeting held on March sixth, twenty twenty five, and the regular public meeting held on March twentieth. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Haldeman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Second by Aman. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it. Pardon me. Hearing of person present. May I?
You may.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Borough Council, your manager. My name is Bob Eyre. I am running for judge in the Court of Common Pleas of Northampton County. And I wanted to take an opportunity to just take a few moments of your time, introduce myself, and give you an idea of who I am, what I do, and why it is that I am running for judge. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm trying to get out to as many places as I can, good places like this. And now, actually, I only live about five minutes from here, so this works out good tonight. I might get home before eight o'clock tonight. So, who am I? I am a person with roots here in Northampton County. My dad was born and raised in Easton. My oldest brother was born in Easton Hospital. Family eventually settled in northern New Jersey. My dad, who started his radio career up here, ended up getting a job in New York City on radio, which is where he worked until he retired. So I grew up there. First opportunity I had to choose a place to live after I graduated from law school in decided to move here, settle here, married a wonderful Nazareth woman, and the two of us. We have a daughter who is now an adult and smarter and more successful than me. And so, very proud to have really spent my entire adult life in the Lehigh Valley. I am right now the first assistant district attorney of Northampton County. Steven Barata was elected district attorney in November of twenty twenty three and asked me to be his first assistant and top prosecutor, which I have done since that time. Prior to that, on three different occasions, now judge, then district attorney Morgan Ellie, asked me to come and work in the district attorney's office. I did that on three separate occasions. All the time I spent in the DA's office prosecuting really the most serious cases. Also involved in investigating grand jury, where we worked on cold murder cases, including one from this borough that resulted in a conviction. In addition to my time in the district attorney's office, I have been asked by the county executive to serve as chief public defender. I did that for four years after being unanimously confirmed by council. Chief public defender is really two roles. One, take on most of the serious cases for those people who are charged with crimes, who are unable to afford representation of counsel. And also to run and manage an office of about twenty-plus attorneys, who all do that job of representing people on a day-to-day basis who cannot afford counsel. Addition to that work as a public defender, I have been turned to by the court time and time again to be appointed to represent those people who have been arrested with the most serious crimes up to, including capital murder, which is something I'm able to do because there's a specific certification for being able to handle the defense of capital murder cases where the death penalty is involved. And I am one of a number of attorneys in Northampton County who held that, so I was appointed in those respects. Beyond that criminal experience, the court has also turned to me in the past when we had a flood of civil litigation in Northampton County in the early two thousands, involving primarily asbestos-related injuries and deaths, mostly for employees in the Bethlehem Steel. About three thousand cases filed in a very short period of time. And the court asked me to serve in a capacity of managing that litigation, which we did. I'm going to suggest successfully in creating a pathway for people who were injured or the survivors of those who died at the hands of corporations who used the asbestos and had the asbestos in Bethlehem Steel, and gave them a pathway to get the compensation if they deserved that compensation. In that capacity, we also, at a time when electronic filing and service really didn't exist in Pennsylvania, we instituted that. It had to be by agreement because the courts didn't allow it at the time. At least there was no rules for it, but we got it to a point where the parties, we employed a mechanism where thousands and thousands of pages rather than being filed in our parsonatary's office and our clerk's office, we were able to do that electronically, which was pretty novel at the time. Beyond my service, criminal work and for the court as I've described, I've also been a private practitioner about a third of my career. I've worked in law firms. I've worked as a sole practitioner myself, running my own business. And in that regard, what I'm, like anybody who's interested in my candidacy, to understand that I have handled basically every single type of case that would come before a judge of the Court of Common Pleas. And that experience is really what I would suggest qualifies me most to serve in that position. Last but not least, I have, at various times through my career, had the opportunity to be asked to come to work for four separate individual judges. I think what's important from that experience is that each one of those judges instilled in me the significance and the importance of the job of a judge of the Court of Common Pleas. The people of Northampton County, you know, you can always take an appeal, right? If the judge gets it wrong. But I think what's important is that the people of Northampton County deserve to have it done right here and correctly in the first instance, so that they can rely on those results, have the finality, and move on with their life, knowing that what was done was correct and is not going to be changed, and they had that finality. They deserve the opportunity to rely on that. I think I'm ready to take on that responsibility, and that's why I am running for judge. And with that, I just want to thank you guys for giving me your time tonight and the opportunity to address those folks who appeared here tonight. And again, thank you to the council, Madam President, and to your solicitor and mayor. Greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. Can I just ask you to spell your last name, please?
Sure. That's exactly what you're supposed to do when you step up to this microphone. I should know better than that. It's Robert Eyer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob, what was the last law company you worked for?
The last part I can't remember exactly. I think it was, it was hard to say that last night. I spent from late twenty, I'm sorry, beginning of twenty thirteen to the time I came to the district attorney's office beginning of twenty twenty-three as an associate to Steph.
Thanks, Bob.
You're left with a very smart choice.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Certainly will support you, Attorney.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Back to Easter. Thank you. You too.
Thanks, Easter.
Anyone else? For President's report, I have nothing. Mayor's report?
Thank you. Well, the spring has brought a plethora of activity to the borough. First, I want to start off with last week's egg hunt, which our new team pulled off exquisitely fine despite the weather and the decision they had to make to put it off a day. It went off very well. Everyone was very happy with it, although the egg hunt, we timed it. It's under a two-minute egg hunt. If that, we need more official time. But everyone left very happy and fulfilled that we did it. Plenty of eggs for everyone. This Saturday coming up, we have the police, the police department's annual fishing derby beginning at eight o'clock behind the police station along the Hockend Aqua Creek. There are plenty of freshly stocked trout going into the Hockend Aqua Creek. And now with the recent rains, it's going to be even a better run than we had anticipated a few weeks ago. So we're back going for us. Next, I just want to reach out and thank the Northampton press for the coverage that they've given us as a borough and for myself in covering the warm story they wrote about me for the Mayor of the Year award. I truly appreciate it and know that when we have things going on in Northampton, the Northampton press is definitely with us. And I can say from experience that after the piece went out last week, just the congratulatory texts and letters and calls I received let me know that people are reading the press and that's where they're finding the information. This week, we have the Easter egg hunt in, and I'm sorry to councilmen and Haldeman that we didn't get her above the crease, but I was actually taking a picture of the person behind her and she got in the way. But as you can see, she's doing a great job taking care of the candy and
Getting accused of photobombing.
So between, you know, events like this, which are covered by the press and everything else we do, our editor for years, Kelly Lutter Schmidt, thank you, Kelly. You've been with us forever, as far as I know, between the Chamber of Commerce, all our local organizations here that get covered, and our reporter, Bill Liner, who steps up for all these articles and always puts a good light on us, as deserved as we are for those events that we do put out to the town. Thank you for all of that, and it doesn't go unappreciated or a notice to the many people around here. The most impressive thing that I've found from this is the people who are out of the Northampton area that have contacted me based upon the fact they still get the Northampton press where they live. As far as Harrisburg, I received one from Kansas City. So people are still reading the paper, and it's great that we're putting that out there for the borough of Northampton. So thank you, Northampton Press, Kelly, and Bill. And I want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. May your own personal egg hunts and family parties, having gatherings, rather, bring in the spirit of the season. So happy Easter to everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Solicitor's report?
I don't have anything of a legal nature, but I just have to tell you, for all the driving I do around Lehigh Valley, and I do quite a bit, I thoroughly enjoy the borough of Northampton's seasonal decorations. You have the very best seasonal decorations. I thoroughly enjoy them, and I just had to let you know. So I wish everyone a happy holiday.
Well, that Public Works now too. Thank you.
Moving on to reports from committees, we'll start with Mr. Hall, Administration and Finance.
Thank you. There were one hundred thirty livestream views on, of the April third council meeting. As of Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, we received ultimately one hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred eighteen dollars forty-two cents in garbage payments. And the borough's bi-annual, which was fueled audit, will occur on Wednesday, April twenty-third and Thursday, April twenty-fourth. End of report.
Thank you. Building, Land and Recreation, Ms. Haldeman?
Thank you. Do I really have?
Yes, I put two in this year for you.
The Easter egg hunt was an exceptional success. Thank you to everyone who came and supported the event and made it such an exciting time. I did not do that. All applications to be a summer worker for the borough are due to the municipal office by Tuesday, April twenty-second at four P M. Season passes to the pool will go on sale beginning Thursday, May first. They are only available for purchase at the Northampton Recreation Center. And the annual shredding event hosted by Representative Zach Mako will be held on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, in the community center parking lot from ten a.m. to noon. End of report.
Thank you. Code and Police, Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you. As the mayor mentioned, the police department is hosting their annual fishing contest this Saturday, April nineteenth, from eight a.m. to two P M. Tickets are twenty hours and include entry into the event raffle. Starting May first, code enforcement will begin to enforce grass and weed on all residents' property. Certified rental registration notices were sent out to all property owners who did not respond by the due date of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. A twenty-five dollar late fee applies. We also received a Northampton Police Department report from March. We had six hundred forty-two dispatches, one hundred forty-seven instant reports filed, and also fourteen accidents investigation completed. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Fire and Health, Ms. Aman?
Thank you. Applications are still being accepted for the Fire Department Summer Camp being held from July seventh until the eleventh. Northampton Fire Department and Police Department will hold their annual golf tournament at Whitetail Golf Club in Bath on Saturday, May third. Registration starts at seven a.m. For more information, please see the Spring Borough Newsletter, which can be found on the website. And the Board of Health will be having their April meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth at seven P M. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassick?
Thank you. Zoning Officer David Lear and members of the Public Works met with the representative on April fifteenth from PennDOT regarding the measurements of the work that needs to be completed on Route three twenty-nine near Main Street. Public Work employees have been working day after day on the pool, getting it ready for the new season. Painting of the pool should begin in the next few weeks. The concrete pad has been poured by the falls at the edge of Canal Street Park. This will be the location of the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactor. That is donated by, to the borough. The trash compactor should be installed within a few weeks. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Any unfinished business? Moving on to new business. Consider retirement request.
Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator Steve Urban, after twenty-six years with Northampton Borough, or twenty-six plus years with Northampton Borough, is requesting his retirement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion to accept Mr. Urban's request.
Can we make a motion to say, no, he has to stay if he's listening?
I think I'll leave no matter what. He actually might be. I think he does watch it.
Then I say no.
I second that.
Okay, I need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion to accept by Mr. Stone. Do I have a second?
Second with regrets.
Second by Mr. Glassick. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider resignation request.
The borough's Animal Control Officer Beth Smith has submitted a letter of resignation from her physician effective May first, twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion to accept Mrs. Smith's resignation.
Motion made to accept Mrs. Smith's resignation.
Motion by Mrs. Aman. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider appointment of borough treasurer.
Historically, the borough's bookkeeper has also served as the borough's treasurer. I suggest that council appoint James Maynard as borough's treasurer.
I need a motion to accept Mr. Maynard as treasurer. Motion. By Ms. Haldeman. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hall. Any questions?
Questions?
Go ahead.
What is this different than the way we used to do it?
It's always been that way. We've always done it where bookkeeper is the primary position, but the treasurer, since they handle more of the financial
And signing and things like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just a separate, and in the budget, it's a separate line as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request to attend the International Police Mountain Bike Association Certification.
Chief Kadingo is requesting that Officers Evan Medlar and Matthew Young Bear attend an International Police Mountain Bike Association Certification course at the Ann Town Police Academy. The course will be held from June twenty-third through twenty-seventh at a cost of two hundred fifty dollars per officer.
A motion to honor Chief Kadingo's request.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Haldeman. Do I need a second?
Second.
By Ms. Aman? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of Central Assembly of God.
The Central Assembly of God of Bethlehem is requesting to reserve both pavilions and the band shell on September seventh, twenty twenty-five for service and activities. They are requesting a waiver of the rental fees for the two pavilions.
I need a motion to accept the request of Central Assembly of God.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stone. Do I need a second?
Second.
By Ms. Haldeman? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the Lehigh Valley Hospital Muhlenberg Trauma Program.
Lehigh Valley Hospital Muhlenberg Trauma Program is requesting to use the portable restroom on May thirty-first for their Regroup and Ride event. They will not be charged a rental fee, however, they will be charged the labor rate for a Public Works employee to monitor the restroom.
I need a motion to honor this request.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Or Mr. Glassick? Any questions?
Question.
Go ahead.
Since they're not going to be charged a rental fee, could we ask them to support our Cindy Miles Adaptive Fund for our program?
You can always ask, sure.
That's right. If we don't ask, we don't dance.
Exactly.
So I think we should ask them for that. That would be nice for, good gesture. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of Saint John the Baptist Church.
Saint John the Baptist Church of Northampton is requesting to use the band trailer on Sunday, August thirty-first, for their annual picnic. They will be charged three hundred dollars for the rental fee and a hundred fifty-dollar delivery and setup fee. They will also be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
I need a motion to honor the request of Saint John the Baptist Church.
Motion made.
Motion by?
Me.
Ms. Aman? I need a second. By Ms. Haldeman? Any questions?
In Mr. Opsansky's absence, maybe we should ask if he wants the restroom. It hasn't been done in a while.
It has not.
There's a reason for that.
Exactly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Reports from council members. I'll be starting with Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. I do a couple of things. Thank God that international bicycle police certification isn't internationally. We're not sending them over in the other country or something. But I do wish everybody happy Easter. I'm glad that we're finally moving into the second, next century by moving things on email and trying to save some paper. I know some of us like paper, and I know they're printing that for convenience purposes, but I'm glad we're doing that. I'm looking forward to the fishing contest. Not that I'll be fishing, but there is basket raffle and stuff like that. I guess I have a question, maybe later with the bills, but what is our total garbage if it's all collected? I know we talked about how much we've collected, over a million dollars already. So if we collected everything, what it would be?
Do you remember off the top of your head, Megan?
Total, what we built?
Yeah.
One point, a little over one point four million.
Yeah. So we are very far ahead of what we, I think, what, two hundred thousand roughly, give or take by now, maybe a little less.
Maybe a little less.
Comparable to previous years.
Okay, thank you. And how about the status of the rental late fees? Do you know what the percentage is?
Four.
Like, how many, how many people are late from these, when we send out the notices? Usually gives a status report of like ninety percent or something like that.
Normally get that at the first meeting of the month, start about ninety-three, seventy-five.
Three, that's what I was going to say to you.
Thank you. These guys have all the answers tonight. That's great.
What's up for Megan?
Megan does, that's true. What's the status of lifeguards?
We have the
Why did you just come up here, Megan?
No, I'm kidding. That was a joke. No, we, we've gotten a decent amount of applications, especially over the last couple of weeks. So on Tuesday is the last day for applications, and then we're going to start doing interviews.
Okay. Are we looking to try to extend the length of the pool opening later than we've
We're going to try, yeah.
I know it's always a hassle. I mean, it's a timeframe because you don't have enough lifeguards that go back to college. But it just seems like we really have to try to look at that and extend it.
We've got a decent amount of varying ages this time, not just high school and college kids. So I'm hopeful, cautiously optimistic is the correct wording.
And my last thing would be, what is the status of street repairs from the U G I dig up and things like that?
The last I heard that they were I mean, last I heard, they had been talking with Rich about roads that they plan to repave and how Rich wanted it done, or how Public Works wanted it done. So we had been coming up, we had been talking about it. Haven't heard from them in a couple of weeks, but that's probably because they're scheduling after paving.
And with all the wind dam, with all the wind that we had, have we had any kind of damage or anything in the borough?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Power, tree things?
No, no. We get a few banners that were kind of, but other than that, they were kind of
Thank you.
Yeah, people, residents typically call in for those when they occur. That happens pretty often. Yeah. Like one or two a week.
And again, wish everybody a happy Easter. Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick. Ms. Aman?
I don't have any questions. Just want to wish everyone a happy Easter.
Thank you.
Mason?
Ah, yes. Just two things. I just wanted to see if there's any updates down by the shooting range along the Cal there. And then also, I just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Easter.
Any update?
Not much more than, you know, it's police investigation and not much more that I can really speak to.
Okay.
When I hear anything, I'll let you guys know. But no, really not much to speak of at the moment.
Thank you. Ms. Haldeman?
I want to, I too want to congratulate everybody for the successful Easter egg hunt, although
Don't you dare. Don't you dare.
If I have to read about exceptional, I think that
Okay, that's valid.
I think that the community should know that unfortunately, the Easter egg hunt did start a little early as somebody was yelling, "Run!" into their microphone, encouraging someone to run with their child to make it on time. However, there were at least a hundred children who were very eager to run after the Easter eggs, and so some fool should not
Wow. I was encouraging them to hurry. And I said, "Run!" Not anticipating, half the group was going to take that as But now I have learned from my experience. When I turned, I turned with the microphone. Live and learn.
I believe even your wife felt that that was
Well, my wife said that, heard the group that she was in, they looked around and said, "What does that mean?" And then I said, "Okay, go."
Everybody should really
You know, you live and you learn, you know. It was interesting. They were on their toes now. Now they'll know. They won't know for next
There were smiling faces, and as it's recorded for public history there, I was handing out candy, and as usual, the children of Northampton were polite and appreciative and happy. I got more thank yous and prompts from parents that they thank yous. And I guess I am an old lady because I sure do like to hear that. But they were, I didn't see a one single tear or fussing, so the run did not seem to
It didn't deter.
It didn't, it didn't seem to turn people off. We might not let them have a microphone.
Ten seconds early or ten seconds later, it still would have been done in thirty seconds. Don't worry. We didn't let him live it down. No, I, every day. Today was the first day he didn't say anything.
I, you know, and while we won't, we won't divulge them, I think that there were some really great ideas discussed while we were there about activities for the community. I'm going to throw that at Mr. Seren says. I thought he had some great ideas, as did Mr. Wellsco. So I, I think that, you know, that the borough community should stay tuned for some really fun possible activities that we may be able to pull off in the future that really sounded kind of cool and exciting. So there you go. There's a little teaser. And then I just, I want to thank Mr. Urban, if he is on listening. Um, and then I, I just, I, I wanna, uh, thank Mr. Urban if he is on, uh, listening and if he's not, please send him, I'm sure we'll see him, but, uh, thank him for his years of service and his true dedication to the borough and always handling himself in an exceptionally professional manner. Um, I have always found it, um, to be enjoyable to talk to him and listen to him, answer questions and explain things, so, um, he has been much appreciated by me and, uh, he will be sorely missed. I'm sure there's a lot of gentlemen there who will step up, but he will be missed. And same for, um, Beth, um, whose name's, it's Smith, right? Yeah, I only had to interact with her once, but she was actually out of town, responded, told me she was coming into town when there was a dog, and so she absolutely did respond to that. So, again, I thank her for what she has done for the borough up until this time and, uh, I hope we can find someone who will, um, step up to the plate and take on that challenging task, so, that's it, thank you and happy Easter to everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Stone?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I too wanted to thank, uh, get the opportunity to thank Steve Urban, uh, for his twenty-six years, uh, serving the, working in the borough, he's gonna be hard to replace. Um, so anyway, wish him well in his, uh, retirement and I appreciate, uh, his willingness to help us through this transition as well, so, thank you, Steve. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Oh, thank you, uh, wish everybody a happy Easter, I know repetitions, uh, also, thanks to Steve, I know Steve prior to his twenty-six years there, I know him in his previous career for probably twenty years. So, uh, and I know our kids grew up together as well. Uh, one last, our breakfast was very successful on, on Sunday, I, it was three hundred and thirty, I believe it was, which was, I think it was the highest, if it wasn't, it matched the one with the Christmas, with the, with Santa's. And, uh, and it also was in competitive, cause the late Easter fell and people not having one their normal week, we were competing with Laurel over in, on the same weekend, and they had their Easter bunny and everything else, so, so I think we did pretty good. Um, and there's one more of them left and that's on Mother's Day, so just let's hit it and then it'll be done for the summer. So, and, uh, thanks, and thanks again for everything and happy Easter all and, and the report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be moving on to announcements, starting with Mr. Serenzes.
Uh, um, yeah.
Did we have?
I'm taking notes here. You're taking notes, yes, sure. Um, yeah, congratulations, Steve, uh, I've got the pleasure of working with him for quite a few years, he will definitely be missed from the borough and, uh, he'll be hard to replace it. But a lot of the guys down there will be able to handle and step up and move up in that position down there. Same thing with Beth, um, I thank you for your service in that role, um, a thankless job, so, if anybody's out there, I think the, I think the mayor was looking to apply for it because he had, uh, helped this week getting a bird out of the office in here and he was said the banners.
Right, he fed it and everything.
So, he's trained, he is ready to go. He opened the door up, let that bird get out. Um, yeah, the egg hunt was great, uh, the Easter bunny was there, he had a great time with the kids, getting the pictures, and I think the, uh, Public Works also for painting some new designs out in the grass out there, was a great thing. Um, the pictures on the pa- in the paper had them laying around, it was, it was really cool, cool pics to see that, um, I'm not sure whose idea that really was, but it worked out well. And on that note, so we do have a lot of chocolate bunnies left from that event, there's quite a few here at the office, so if you are in the borough here, borough resident and you're ten or under and you couldn't make it to the egg event, you can come down to the office and pick up a chocolate bunny that we have here. Um, lastly, uh, that I have is, although it's not formally set yet, there will be a planning commission meeting on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. This will to be to discuss the River Central and walk through possible changes to the new multi-municipal zoning ordinance. Carolyn Yeagle, is that's her, right, like Yeagle, Yeagle, from Environmental Planning and Design will be there to help out and assist in the discussions and answer any questions for this River Central that we've been going to for quite some time already. Uh, not counting it, right?
No.
But we do encourage council members and all interested parties to attend and learn about the process too, maybe we'll help out during council meetings when it comes time to actually approve it, that way you have a little bit of better understanding of the background of it, what we're gonna be doing. But that means it's gonna be more discussion based, talk about different changes that will be made. And I believe that's all I have. That's the only thing for me this time?
No, Jerry, you actually did a wonderful job.
Well, you-
Didn't, didn't, we talked about it before.
Yeah, totally did, I mean, I do have some stuff here, Steve and Beth, so, I guess, but what the hell. Um, I do actually have a decent amount of stuff, so I apologize ahead of time.
Oh, I asked, that's, who wants printed copies?
That wasn't on my list, I asked that.
That could be an email.
That could be an email.
Yeah, that could be an email.
Um-
Do not email me, I don't need an email.
Steve, I don't know what more to say, but that sewer plant's not gonna be the same without you, I haven't known you as long as some of the people up here, but I know your capabilities and it's gonna be tough without you, but I appreciate you working with us and being willing to help, um, kinda moving forward, so thank you for everything you've done, truly, thank you. Beth, same thing, thank you so much, um, I know your job can be also very thankless sometimes and, um, I know you really put your heart and soul into it, so thank you so much, you will very much be missed, um, mayor again, if you aren't interested or Judy would like to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm-
Team up.
Yeah, team, yeah, there you go, team up. Um- I mean, I got such a list here, I gotta start crossing stuff up.
I heard Mike Gollan might be interested.
There's another team up. Um, let's see, on Tuesday, we are doing our cleanup day in the park from twelve to roughly about three thirty, we're gonna be doing it at Twenty-Sixth Street, um, so we, like, when we get there, we're gonna kind of assign tasks and stuff that we're gonna do, um, probably a lot of it will defer to, uh, Rich and Lobby because they're the two that kind of worked on it and they've been doing prep throughout the week, getting stuff ready, whether it be painting, uh, building, we are, we did purchase a tree today to plant over there for an area where we removed a tree in the past, it is a red maple, it's beautiful, Josh Abraham picked it out. Um, so if you don't like it, it's Josh's fault. What else we got here? Um, on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth from four to six, the Chamber is hosting a meet the mayor and managers event at the Gin Mill. Uh, the mayor-
It's mostly for YouTube.
Myself and Jerry will be there, uh, for about four to five thirty, it's kind of meet and greet, um, and then from five thirty to six, we're gonna kind of give a little talk, presentation. Members of the Fire Department, Police Department will also be there, um, you may have gotten some information already from Jessica from the Chamber, she did say that it's gotten quite popular already, so if you're on their mailing list, you may have gotten something from them already. Let's see, yes, the Easter egg hunt was a great success, um, minor mistakes were made along the way, but those aside, um, it was a great success, I think everyone had a great time. Um, Public Works did a great job with the deck, the designs that they made, they went above and beyond what suggestion was made, originally it was just suggested to just do one design and they did one for every single, uh, age group and, uh, next year we even have bigger plans to do something even larger. They don't know that yet, but Jerry and I do, um.
You're not gonna have the microphone, I swear.
Oh, no, I have it, I have to redeem myself, I swear. Um, also, I'm gonna finish with the good stuff before the bad stuff, uh, Bernadette, I don't, I don't know what more to say, but you're doing such a wonderful job with everything, doing HR related stuff, payroll related stuff, secretarial stuff. I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done over these last few weeks, this week alone, um, payroll was done, I think by eleven o'clock, which I think is a new record for the borough. So, uh, things are transitioning very well and running very smoothly and I can't be more proud of the office staff, you too, Jerry. Um, if you saw that, there was a letter that I got just late this afternoon, which is why I didn't make it into the package, it was just put everyone's seat from the Exchange Club. Um, after many conversations and kind of looking through a lot of avenues, they have agreed to sell us their, uh, they call it their bus, but it's their concession stand for the five thousand dollars that we allotted this year for, um, any type of events we have, so when we do movies in the park this summer, or we can do something, if you wanna do something, the Community Days or, um, anywhere, so we, we got it for exactly the price we were hoping to get it for and I would like to say thank you to the Exchange Club for working with us and being willing to, uh, give it to us and sell it to us, really, so, um, that will be coming soon and then, before you know it, in about two months, we'll be having movies in the park already. So, that's moving along and this was, this was pretty much the last big hurdle to get through, to get there. Now the not fun news, um, I was told today that unfortunately, our street sweeper is done. It has broken down for the last time and is not repairable anymore. So, Andrew Marsen and I made, made some phone calls, we're doing stuff, uh, looking into some things today, possible avenues that we wanna go with, whether or not we want to purchase something this year, do you wanna lease something, certain places have leases with a one-year deferment on payment, so it wouldn't really affect our budget this year, it's something we can budget for next year, but still have it already for the season. Uh, whether or not we wanna go the route of a loan, how we wanna do it, we're kind of still working through, but I wanted to just bring it to your attention because it's gonna be a decision we probably should make sooner rather than later, on if we wanna do something for this year or not, but I also wanna let the public know that for a couple weeks, you probably won't see anything. Oh.
At least a couple weeks, probably.
Yeah.
Did we, may I ask a question? Did we check with Life Low, Caddis Haco or maybe North Caddis Haco, all those?
Yeah, Caffley just got a new one, East Allen has one, uh, North Caddie's is, they don't run it as much as they used to, so Marsen and I were kind of looking at possibilities on what we can do. We do have a good relationship with the surrounding community, so, if needed.
Okay.
Um, I think North Caddie already shares theirs with Allen Township.
Yeah.
So theirs might be.
So, but even, even then, we'd maybe get it if mo- at most, maybe once a week, every couple weeks, so it's not, it's not a permanent solution, it'd be very temporary. Um, so we are kind of going through the motions and kind of exhausting possibilities.
If that is something that we purchase, is that something to co-stars?
Yes.
It is a-
Yeah, it would be to co-stars, yes.
So, there's a pretty controlled price to that.
Is there grants for it available?
We, that's what we're gonna have to try, but the problem is, is to get one, it'd be, you're looking at next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it would have to be something that turnaround time would be really quick on, for the most part, or if we just come to terms with the fact that we might not have a sweeper this year. So, we either kind of get one and lease or loan one or, um-
If we would lease one now, could we apply for a grant next year when we would purchase it, or because we already are leasing it, would it be considered also?
We'd have to look at the terms of the grant, the final, like, is it, if it's something that was beforehand or if it's something that'd be applied, so. Pa- maybe.
Yeah, that might be, might be playing a different-
Yeah, it prob- I'm, I would probably skew towards probably not, but-
Probably not, yeah.
Is there any cash value before currently?
It was before, but we did not anticipate this happening now, we figured we'd get at least another year out of it and then plan for next year, but maybe, we didn't broach that topic with the company yet, but they were the ones that were offering the most before, so they might still offer it now because maybe they can fix it.
Okay.
But Jerry, didn't we get like two years on it, didn't they write that off as dead two years ago?
Pretty much, yeah.
Two years ago and then they found a part, there was a part that they couldn't get.
Yeah, so we-
And they did, so, I mean, knock on wood, we did, they did get a couple more years out of it because-
Yeah, they did, they, it's been fourteen years we've had it, which is-
But I mean, like two, like a couple of years ago, they wrote it off, there was a part that they couldn't get, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, Aaron was doing a great job, he was looking around all over the place today, really trying to find a way to get something and the one part the company even got it from, just, they don't even make it anymore. So, it's, he said to even fix it, you'd be looking at the price, probably tens of thousands of dollars to fix it and at that point, it's not worth it for maybe a couple of months. Um, so, if anyone hears anything or knows anything, feel free to reach out to anyone, whether it be Public Works, Jerry, myself, um, but we'll kind of keep you updated as we kind of figure out some stuff. Have a wonderful Easter.
That was that, I thought you were-
If you have your own Easter egg hunt at your house and you hear someone say, run, that does not mean go, wait for the go.
Sure.
What does the run mean?
So, there was, uh, a family, two behind me to the left and someone said, wait, wait, Brian, so I turned and said to them, in my naturally joking manner, run, run, but I said it into the microphone, so half of the people thought it meant, oh, he said go, the other half did not, so. Yeah. You know, you live and learn kind of a thing, you know.
We didn't have any complaints called in?
No, everyone was happy, I mean, they got their eggs, I mean, they did complain about Jerry making the eggs so far away.
Hey, I was the only one to do that, the older kids, I let the space in between the line, I let them run up the hill before I get to the eggs. Like ten fifteen, let them run first, they put all their egg, they put all their egg right in front.
Next year, they're gonna get up at the high school and get it next.
Well, I, I wanted all the kids to be able to get to, not the ones that are just really great sprinters. That's it, that's it, that's all I got.
May I just crack one?
You need, you want your minutes, you want your packet printed?
No, I, I, I just, I didn't know if something was gonna be here and I had to have something to read, so if I'm gonna read for something, I didn't know, I, if I had to print that, that would-
Well, I have to have mine printed.
Yeah, I, I-
And the mayor wants his print.
I didn't know if I was gonna have to have my phone here and sit here and read what I had online, and that was my, my urgency of my question. I didn't know if I had to print something up, cause I'm gonna come here and I had to give my report and I might go, okay, I'm looking at my phone, you know, okay, you know.
I get it.
Okay, three of us.
I have a question, no, so, I brought my iPad and it's all up here, Jerry's able to type on his, is mine read only?
No.
You're in the PDF version of it, we can, I can, I can share the Google Drive with you to have access to it like this.
Okay.
That would, and you can type into it also now.
So, if I could type my notes on here, I'm fine with no part of it.
Yes, well, I, I will, uh, get, set up a shared Google folder and you can go right into it and just pull it right out of there and-
So, what happened to the follow-up tablets that you re- talked about?
We still are thinking about it, we just still kind of figured everything out.
I didn't even want a tablet, I wouldn't.
That is a, that is a separate email that will go out. But yes.
I check my emails a thousand other times.
It's in the shared drive.
A thousand other times.
Maybe, do you have your phone?
I think copy. Okay, copy, really important ability.
May I, may I quick make an adjustment to his announcement?
Uh-oh.
Yes.
Uh, April twenty-ninth is a meet the managers and mayor. Okay, it is-
I was reading by the title.
It was meant to be a community event where we have two young managers, there were, may have been some question marks back in September when they first started, but they have obliterated those question marks and now have brought us many great events, many great ideas, uh, none of the events we have had in this borough have been the same as they were before, if you don't recognize that. From the tree lighting, to the egg hunt, to everything in between, uh, I had the privilege of being here for the last two weeks wrapping up the hometown heroes, sitting here and watching this beehive activity, which I don't think I've ever witnessed before. I've been exhausted just watching everybody in and out, getting things done and making this borough a much better place. Uh, come out to the Gin Mill, uh, there'll be some food and drink, it'll be a great opportunity to go one-on-one with them and ask, has your, excuse me, have your questions answered? Uh, what they're doing in town, what plans are for the town, uh, it's about these two gentlemen here and, uh, things they could bring from you to the council to build a better Northampton. And please, that Tuesday's gonna be a fun time, uh, looking forward to it and, uh, I hope everybody can make it, Gin Mill, April twenty-ninth, four to six, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to pay the bills.
Motion made to pay the bills.
By Mrs. Arman, do you have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone, questions?
Questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. I was just adding the managers and the mayor's company, so I didn't wanna miss that. Um, Bachmann's Incorporated, is that a roof repair somewhere for eight hundred and eight dollars?
That is chemicals for the sewer plant.
All the Bachmanns?
Yeah, Bach- Bach-
Buckman's?
Yeah, Buckman's, yeah, they do, they use, they do chemicals for the pool and last year, we went over to them for some, uh, chemicals for the sewer plant, cause it's cheaper.
Uh, DRC Technologies?
Yeah, that's our IT, somehow, um-
Five thousand dollars?
That's our yearly contract, so it's based off of the hours worked. Um, it's just somehow we, it slipped through the cracks like a month ago, when they sent it over, so that's why it's coming now.
What's with the First Commonwealth Credit Union lost check for five hundred dollar fee?
So, we, um, before implementing it onto ISOD, we, with every payroll, any of the employees that contribute to their credit union, they take, they withhold money and, uh, send it, we used to send it by check. Two times within the last two months, uh, the check has been lost, so that is just the, had to canceling the check and then just reissuing it again.
We had to pay that?
No, that is just the amount of money, so it's, it's going out as it looks like an AP check, but it's really just the money from the employee salary that they're choosing to-
Good to know. Um, did we ever have a meeting with Gilmore and Associates to come in and explain some of this stuff?
Yes, so I spoke with, um, Tom about a month ago, um, about, he is all for it, he would like to do a smaller presentation here to council and then with the Sewer and Public Works Committee, he would like to do a larger presentation, um, he said he wanted to wait until he had the Chapter Ninety-four report back, so there was more that he could report about, um, EDUs. But, so that would be, that should be coming back within a couple of weeks.
So, the twenty-five thousand dollar bill is for that?
It's for, that is for finishing up everything on the Twenty-first Street pump station, um, general services, getting work finalized with the Stewart Street pump station, so that's a collective of everything.
Now, there was a Miller Supply and then a Miller Municipal Supply.
Yeah, different companies, yeah, Municipal does the signs that we get made throughout the town and then Miller Supply is a- Yeah, different companies, yeah, Municipal does the signs that we get made throughout the town and then Miller Supply is a hardware.
Can we, are we having somebody look over that while we're getting that Miller, cuz we have that new.
Tifco, yes.
Tifco that comes in and fills that stuff for the reason that we didn't have to make so many trips, but it looks like we have a lot of trips up in Miller.
I will say, this month was less than it has been in many months, in terms of cost and amount of trips.
Well, again, but we were doing painting and stuff like that, I understand that's a different thing, they're not gonna store that. But I just didn't know if we are looking into what they're going out for and making sure that they're not.
So I go through with Miller Supply, I go through every single invoice and I mark it down, so, yeah, a lot of them, of the maybe, there is. Thirty, thirty-five, a decent amount of them were for Detective's Office just because all that stuff, so. And then a lot of it was park-related stuff because it being summertime, so.
It's more about just the awareness that we have, that we, people know that what's going on instead of, you know, just writing a check to pay Miller Supply.
Agreed.
So Uline and Un- UniFirst, what are the difference between them? Uline is for uniform.
Uline, we got tables uh, that were in the budget for the rec center.
Okay.
And UniFirst is the weekly um, charge for the uniforms for Sewer and Public Works.
Okay, and then the First Regional Compost, ten thousand dollars?
That is FERC, yeah, that's the, that's the quarterly payment that allows all of our residents to go and use FERC.
End of my questions, thank you.
Primo Brands, Blue Schreiten Brands?
Yeah, so Primo is the new owner of Ready Free Fresh by Nestle, which is, who supplies water to the buildings.
And how about, what's Purchase Power?
Purchase Power is the Pitney Bowes machine for postage.
And the Mountner Auto Repair, I know Chevy Todd's probably the least car, who started it?
It's not you, it's, there you go, yeah, yeah, they're just, I think they're for inspections.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
That was rapid fire, I liked it.
I will add there though, for these future APs, uh, it's probably gonna be, it's always going to be multiple ones from now on, cuz we're gonna start adding the EFT transactions onto there. Which is something we're going to look into in the future.
Cuz there was different ones.
Yeah, there's uh, James actually figured out a way through a microphone where it's, instead of actually printing a check for an EFT transaction. And voiding, like writing out void, you don't have to print a check anymore, just put it as an EFT transaction and it'll be a separate report on here.
He's hitting the ground running.
And it's gonna be something that we're going to look into in the future about adding more of those types of transactions.
Utilities especially.
Utilities, things like that, that way it's easier and we can.
Less checks.
Less checks.
Especially because sometimes with certain companies, by the time we get it and have a council meeting, it can be too like.
Especially some of these large checks, like I, I hate like those garbage ones, like eighty-eight thousand, where he's like sending a check for eighty-eight thousand out in the mail. Especially with how many things get, yeah, so that's gonna be on the.
Especially because a lot of, in the last couple of weeks, we have had checks that we've mailed out that have not made it to their destination. Timely, sometimes it's been weeks later, sometimes it's not been, as you saw with First Commonwealth, um, so yeah, we're really trying to.
I, and I just appreciate the fact that, you know, and I think we've talked about this a lot of times, our borough has to make changes to move forward. And I think we're doing a great job of moving forward, and I know there's people that don't like change and unfortunately, that's the only constant there is in life, is change. And we have to make these things to move forward and make it more efficient, more safety, more efficient for our security of our finances. Uh, I just appreciate all you're doing and all the teamwork that everybody here in the borough is doing to move forward with stuff like that. From the Public Works and bringing in Tifco, so that we're not making trips out to different hardware stores and, you know. That kinda stuff is so important and I know maybe the residents don't see it all the time and we're spending some money to upgrade things like iPads, but. It really is an important factor for us to move forward as a borough and stay ahead of these financial curves and things that are happening in our world. So thank you for all for you do that.
Absolutely.
Alright.
After you get the approval, I have one more thing to add before you adjourn, seriously, unless you want me to add it now.
What?
I was gonna, I have one more thing to add, if you wanted to do the uh, approval, then I can just add it before you get to adjournment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, pay the bills, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, go ahead, Mr. Serenzes.
I wanted to add, I forgot to put in my announcement that the bucket truck is done and ready and we will, should have it next week.
Yep.
The last thing we're waiting on is we needed a certified check and to get over to the bank and have that, it wasn't, we couldn't get it right away. So that's what kinda holdup is right now, that's the last holdup, it is at the Heighton Ford and we will be getting it next week.
So with that bucket, is it the one that's behind it or the front of it, the bucket?
It's, it's behind.
Did they like that or they didn't like that?
Yes, it's one, it's one, yes.
Perfect, okay.
Yep.
With Public Works, they always would say that even in front of the truck, they wanted the one behind it for safety reasons and stuff like that. I guess if you're in the bucket and they're moving around, you'd rather be behind it instead of in front of the truck, so you don't get run over.
I went up there, to SMF and, and we looked at it before, they sent it out for the final touches, it was a couple of guys in the Public Works and they were surprisingly happy for it.
Good.
So.
Very nice.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Made by Mr. Hall?
Correct.
Need a second?
Second.